Of allegiance?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everybody. Can I get a motion to approve our agenda this morning?
So moved.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Got a second. Anybody have anything they want taken off or added to the agenda? Okay. We call the roll, please.
Commissioner Schmidt? Commissioner Schmidt?
Oh, excuse me. Of course, yes.
Commissioner Arons?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes. Motion carries. Then on the consent agenda, can I get a motion, please?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
Thank you, got a motion and a second. Any public input on the consent agenda? Anybody want any item taken off? All right, if not, we call the roll, please.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Arons?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes. Motion carries. I'll move on to our regular business. First item on the agenda is just a board discussion on the establishment of a carbon dioxide transport and storage advisory committee. And you should have all received a draft of a resolution. Did everybody receive that? The only change that I noted when I was looking at it was toward the bottom of page one, it's section one, would be to where it says to provide input and make recommendations. If that could say to Planning and Zoning and the Commissioners? Planning and Zoning Board, or however you want to say it, but... Because it'll go back in front of them first and then come to us, right?
Now it has to go in front of us first?
Yeah, so it'd have to go in front of the board first, and then you'd send it down for recommendation.
Okay, right. Okay.
Say that again. It goes in front of the Commission first?
Just as, just to send it down to the Planning Commission to provide a recommendation to the board for review. That's the proper procedure under statute.
It wouldn't start under Planning and Zoning?
Because it's an amendment to the comprehensive plan, it'd have to go in front of the board first to send it down to the Planning Commission for review and recommendation and send back up to the board. I know that's...
That sounds like, that sounds like government to me.
It does.
Good morning, Drew.
Good morning. Drew DeGroot from the State's Attorney's Office. Under statute, if you're making an amendment to the comprehensive plan, you have to do it in the same manner which you passed the comprehensive plan, which would mean that the Board of Commissioners has to send in an ordinance or, I guess, a contemplated ordinance amendment down to Planning Commission for review and recommendation back up to the Board, if that makes sense. I know it maybe doesn't, but it's under 11228, I believe, is the statute that requires it. It either has to be passed by Board action, sent down to the Planning Commission, or it can be a petition, I guess, under 11228.1. But for it to be in compliance with the statute under 11228, it comes before the Board, basically just a procedural matter, that the Board sends it to the Planning Commission for review and mandatory recommendation.
Okay?
Okay.
And then can you put Exhibit A up as well on the screen?
You said that very well. Still doesn't make any sense to me, but we'll go by the law, you know?
I don't think Exhibit A was attached to it.
With the dates and everything, yeah. Does anybody have any changes that they want to make to the draft other than the one that I mentioned? Commissioner Gibbon, any changes that you see?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, would you...
Are there any changes to the draft that you would like made?
No, none at this time.
Okay. So then that'll come back and be back on the agenda then for Board action at the next meeting, correct? Okay. I'll go ahead and listen to some public input on that, although we're not taking action on it today. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come up and give input on this agenda item?
Good morning. Betty Otten, 467-872-73rd Street in T. First of all, Madam Chair, I want to thank you for bringing this forward. I, I think it's very proactive for what's going on. And I, I would like to recommend Tony Ventura as our grassroots, well-known expert to be part of that committee. And then also, I have a question. There was, I think, a pipeline person supposed to be appointed on this committee? I'm not sure, but with no pipeline company before the PUC, I was wondering why they should have a seat at the table. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to come up and speak on this agenda item? You state your name and address, please.
Ernest Stropmeyer, 28503 474 Avenue, Worthing. Came to my attention, too, that there's a possibility of somebody for the pipeline to be on committee. I object to this also because there is... They're not citizens of Lincoln County, and they're trying to get eminent domain they've used. There's here photo shows where they've trespassed people's property, and then they use armed guards to try to protect their people against the citizens. There's nothing they've done that shows that they're trying to get along with the people or cooperate. When asked the question if they would be doing these projects without the federal subsidy, the long and short answer became no. The PUC found that they had people that came to work, to promote it, that were hired employees, attorneys, and no local farmers. There were many local farmers and local people who opposed the CO2 pipeline, but none that were supporting it. If they would have came and just tried to address the people appropriately and not try to push the people with their easement, their eminent domain and trespassing, they might have had a better chance. There's nothing that the CO2 pipeline is doing for the community. And it's obvious that the main reason they're doing it is the money that's available through the tax credits. Also going to speak, if you want to reset that, you can, because I'm also speak for the veterans.
On the pipeline topic?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead. I'm not going to reset it.
Well, I may go over. The veterans gave their lives for our freedom. Many people fought in wars so we could have freedom, so we could be here and do this. And it wasn't so that foreign companies, foreign investors, were able to come and take our property and force their way onto our way of life. This is, if, if they were given these easements and so on like this, they're just doing the same thing as stealing the land, because these are lifetime easements. They're not just something that goes in and goes away again.
And so if you would like, I mean, we're going to have this on the agenda again for Board action, and you'll be given another opportunity to speak, but you can finish up your sentence, and then I'm going to ask you to have a seat.
All right, well, then, there's no reason to have somebody that's not a resident on a committee to try to make ordinance for our area and our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to come up this morning and speak? All right, if not, we've got that change. Little bit of further discussion that I'd like to have on the point that was made. I think, you know, regarding who is going to be on this committee, I don't know that we're, I don't know who, if anyone, is actually going to want to be on it from the industry. I think that they have valuable information to share. I think that somebody from the industry would be a good person to have on this, to have that discussion. Now that said, I would like to have seven people on it with, that will vote. I could see adding another Planning and Zoning Commissioner, and then perhaps inviting somebody from the industry for informational purposes who is a non-voting person on this ad hoc committee. I don't know, counsel, or would there be any problem with doing that?
We can certainly amend it to give further discretion to have that for informational purposes only, if we want to do that, yeah.
I think that would be a good idea.
Yep, absolutely.
So if we can make that change.
Sean, will you repeat that, please? I didn't get all that. What was that?
We can amend the current resolution to have more discretion and make the member from the industry a non-voting member, and just for informational purposes only.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, since I made those comments, any further comment on that particular change that I'd like to make? All right, if not, then I'd like to see a new draft, I guess, back on the agenda next week for action. With that, we'll just move on to our next agenda item. We got a county aid lien compromise. Good morning, Sheri.
Good morning. Back in August, we had an application for a compromise. We resolved to look at the financial statements between Mike, Commissioner Poppins and Commissioner Schmidt. They did look through the financial documents, and their recommendation would be to deny the compromise at whole.
All right. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Sheri?
No, we did, we reviewed that and saw that there was really no substantiation to the apparent hardship that was there, so we recommended to our auditor that we deny that.
All right, can I get a motion then? I would appreciate a motion in the affirmative.
I would so move.
That's a motion to approve, correct?
Yes.
All right, do I have a second on the motion to approve?
I'll second it.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second to approve. Any public input on this agenda item? If not, then will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Arons?
No.
Commissioner Gibbon?
What?
I think...
Hold it here.
Just a minute.
It's a motion to approve the settlement, so if you want to approve the settlement, that's, your vote was contrary to what you said prior to your vote, so I just...
I mean, a motion that we deny...
No, no, no. You made a motion to approve the compromise, so now you have, if you don't want it, then you have to vote in the negative. You have to say no.
It's just like, we got to get it approved here and then go back down and then go back up again, or something like that?
No.
Okay.
All motions are in the affirmative.
So my motion was that we approve?
It was to approve. It's an affirmative vote, it's an affirmative motion, which is how everybody wants us to do it.
Yes. So now, if you don't want it to pass, then you have to vote against it.
So, is everybody clear?
No.
The motion has to be in the affirmative.
I guess, I guess when you make a motion to deny something, and then you, suddenly it is reversed that you're going to vote, so you have to vote no on the motion that I made.
Because you made a motion to approve the compromise. Your motion was to approve the compromise, because we're doing motions in the affirmative.
Okay, so I vote no.
Okay. Are you sure?
I still don't understand.
All right, Commissioner Gibbon?
Are you asking for my vote?
Yeah, what was your vote?
I'll vote no.
Okay. And I'm voting no as well.
Commissioner Arons?
No.
All right.
I think I got to go to law school and figure this all out, you know?
No, no, you don't.
Come and sit down with me a minute after the meeting.
I didn't hear Commissioner Arons, your vote was what?
No.
Everybody was a no. Okay.
All right, so the second, or the second item that I have is a Board action to approve a budgeted cash, crap, can't even speak, sorry, cash transfer from the general fund to the 24/7 in the amount of $25,006.83. That's the total cash budget transfer that we were going to do.
All right, anybody have any questions for Sheri?
What's the, I mean, obviously, they need it, but are they going over budget, or...
It's not budget, it's cash. So they have $6,000 in their cash, and they have $23,000 or whatever left in budget to spend.
All right, any other questions? If not, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
And is there a second?
I so moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any public input on this agenda item? All right, if not, we call the roll, please.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Arons?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes. All right, now we have opportunity for public comment. Anybody in the audience want to come up and speak? Now would be the time to do so for items not on the agenda.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Mona Holman, 412 East First Street in Canton. I've lived more than 30 years in Lincoln County. I am a retired nurse who spent more than 40 years of her career focused in rural health care, hospitals, clinics, and nursing homes. I'm here today to voice strong opposition to the proposed site for the men's prison. Clearly, this is an issue of not in my backyard. And I want to state clearly that my son and his wife purchased 40 acres approximately five years ago. That's a half mile from the proposed site. They've built a lovely home. He's planted more than 500 trees to improve his property. Half of the ground is rented to a neighbor for egg production. He has two little girls, six years old and three years old, and a third girl to come in November. But I don't want to speak about this from the personal connection and perspective today. I'm here today to talk about my concerns about the proposed site and the infrastructure needs that come along with it. There are all township roads surrounding the site. About a mile and a half from the proposed corner, there's a bridge that went out with the big flood four or five years ago. That road continues to be closed. So clearly, there are issues with infrastructure in Lincoln County as it relates to the maintenance of township roads and the costs that would be associated with upgrading those. I'm also concerned about the demands and the needs for sewer and water, and as I understand it, the city of Harrisburg has closed the door to that access. I'm unclear about the city of Canton. Again, because of my professional career, I'm very concerned about the impact on the emergency medical system, which is a volunteer service predominantly out of Canton. I'm also concerned for law enforcement at both the county and the city level, who have already come before you, as well as the City Commission, to talk about their concerns about how they're resourced, how to keep safety and security for the citizens of this county, for the law enforcement crews themselves, as well as the citizens. So lastly, this proposed site has been called a fudicious use of tax dollars. The seven or eight million dollars that's involved in the transfer of this land is very minimal when you consider it within the total cost of the project. It's approximately 1% of the total cost. In many financial worlds, that's a rounding error. It's not a significant cost. So in closing, again, just to reaffirm my opposition to the proposed site, also to express my disappointment about the veil of secrecy that has shrouded this project for the last six months, and I'm imploring you, as the Commission of the County of Lincoln, to do all that you can to ensure that that veil is lifted and that you listen to the concerns and the perspectives of the constituents of Lincoln County, especially those from Harrisburg and Canton, as that's where I'm hearing most of the opposition. Be a strong voice for us, and thank you for listening today.
Thank you. Anybody else want to give comment this morning?
Morning.
Good morning.
Danny Bliss here, 27623 477th Avenue, Harrisburg, South Dakota, just a mile or so from the pen, men's pen site, and the same words of opposition. And my wife couldn't make it here, out of town on business, and she asked if I could read a letter she put together quick here last night, and so I have been a, she says, Colette Johnson Bliss, "I have been a CFO for 30 years. The site selection in Lincoln County will have long-term fiscal and social impact on taxpayers of Lincoln County. Lincoln County is thriving, growing community. This site selection definitely, no doubt, impact the growth and well-being of South Dakota Lincoln County taxpayers. Decreased land values. We, we owned our land for 30 years and recently built a new $500,000 home on our land. Our neighbor is the process of finishing a $750,000 home. With five miles of this site, there are homes from $400,000 to a million. I received a, we received a 45% tax assessment increase on our property this last year. Yet, with the site just down the road, our actual resale value will take a nosedive due to the one wanting to spend that kind of money to live next to, you know, to the pen. Will the state be reimbursing taxpayers for their losses and decrease their property taxes? All of my neighbors have the very same concern. Increased traffic. We have already noticed an increase in traffic. Vehicles flying down our gravel roads in order to see this proposed site. Parents are worried about their kids playing outside. Farmers dealing with city drivers while they try to get their crops out. The traffic will do nothing but increase with construction, employees, and delivery trucks constantly coming and going. Economic impact. There are so many studies that show the decline of economic activity after a prison is built in the area. Housing will dwindle, but the housing that remains, or actually does develop, will be low income. The people that live around prisons are generally associated with inmate. We are informed that a developer which was going to put up a $10 million housing development south of Harrisburg is now scratched that project. They have no intention to build that kind of house in a prison area. The customer base for that caliber of home, simple, won't support it. The state claims more jobs, really? The new facility is supposed to function with half the staff. Current prison staff as priority in these new jobs. Studies show that gas stations and other jobs that small businesses try to rely on prisons generally fall, fail within five years." And so, summing it up here with taxes, not specialists here, but I'm guessing Lincoln County receives some taxes from the ag land, and I see my time is up here, emergency services, volunteers that you, that you'll lose volunteers, Lincoln County comprehensive plans, although I have not personally read ours yet. Please, these plans designate industrial areas for this type of facility. It protects the ag land and its owners from industrial use. It's a simple fact that our elected officials have conducted most of this behind closed doors. Our government is supposed to be transparent, and does it not make you wonder why this was all so hush-hush? Why ag orders were in place limiting this getting out? This state public land owned by the educational department, the public has a right in the say of how it's used.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Colette Johnson Bliss with so.
Thank you. And I'm just going to say, I mean, people are directing comments and emails, I'm sure to all of us commissioners. I have more emails in my inbox than I can respond to on this issue. We've requested information. If you have concerns and you're mad about what somebody did, it is not this Board. So your comments and your complaints and your concerns right now need to be sent to the state. And I'm sure we can get you an email or an address on who you should send those to, because we are just a notch in the dark about this as anybody here. We have all the same concerns. So I'm going to take more public comment on this, but right now, I think there are more, your complaint should be sent to, to somebody else at this point. And we have requested information, and what information we have that we can share, we will share. So that's all I have to say on that. If anybody else wants to come up and speak on this, feel free to do so. I'm going to ask you to keep to the time constraint. I have, I have to leave. I have court, and Sue Falls at 10:00, so I'm not going to be here for too much longer. That said, anybody will be able to speak today. I'm just going to hand the chair over to Commissioner Gibbon. So is there anybody else that would like to come up and speak during public comment today on that issue or any other issue? Okay, if not, then we'll move on to Commissioner reports? Any Commissioners have reports they'd like to make?
Madam Chair, this goes in line with some of those comments. Commissioner Gibbon and I have been invited to a group of people out by, who live by the prison site, tonight at 6:30, and so if one of you are Mr. Bliss or others, I look forward to seeing you tonight and hearing your comments, and I'm, I'm always open to hearing what people have to say, whether, whether I agree or disagree, or makes me happy or not, I don't care. So I'll listen to you all day long. And so we're going to have an opportunity to hear from those people tonight, and I think it'll be very encouraging. I do think that people are not just concerned about the prison, but they're concerned about zoning issues that go along with after the prison is built and what the area looks like afterwards, too, because even though we may not have authority to regulate the state prison, we do have authority with our comprehensive plan to regulate what the neighborhood will look like after the prison is built. So, and I think people have brought up some, some legitimate issues regarding rural ambulance service. I did have an opportunity... Canton rural fire ambulance service that may be needed for the area. But looking forward to hearing from those people tonight and understanding what their concerns are and having a good dialogue and creating open lines of communication. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners have reports they'd like to make today?
I have a comment to make. Steve, you sent out a request to the state how long ago?
Will you come up, Steve, please?
Our Mr. Rasmussen, our county administrator, but you sent it out, a request to the state. How long ago did we send that?
It was at the same time as the press release last week.
I believe it was October 13th. It was Thursday or Friday.
Have we heard anything back from them?
Have not received a formal response.
Okay. Which is part of my comment, is that one of the frustrations has been exercised here is that you can request from the state, you can ask the questions that you've asked, whether it's from whether they're going to have sewer and water, whether they're going to have impact on the roads, what's going to be, the whole thing. To be able to share with you something, so the frustration not only exists with you, it also exists on this side of the bench. I think I've gotten more emails on this issue than I did on the windmills, if that's possible. But we did. But the one thing that really does concern me, really concerns me, is this fact, is that when you locate a prison, or the penitentiary is located in your county, and there are issues inside where there are... That need where an inmate may cost another inmate, or if you remember a few years back when they had the inmates that attacked this guard, and he was a homicide, that cost Minnehaha County over a million dollars. Well, I've asked and talked to, and I know Commissioner... Mr. Otten has taken that up. I've talked to all of our elected officials and asked, why is it the responsibility of a county to have to defend individuals who are residing in a state penitentiary? So I hope that we can get some legislation enacted on that to alleviate our responsibility, because that could really be a heavy burden for our overall budget.
Thank you. Go ahead, go ahead.
That's just one of the major concerns. But I just want you to know, everybody should know, it's on live stream, it's not the county that elected this thing. We didn't ask for this thing to be given to us. It was blessed by the state, and the state really does have the final authority on most everything. So anyway, that's my comment.
Thank you for that. I'm going to just say, too, on a note, anybody that does want to be part of that ad hoc committee can submit a submission, whether it's an email, or a note, or a letter, or, you know, whatever the case may be. Steve, do you want to get those at your office?
That's fine.
I mean, does that work?
Yes.
And then we'll go through them? Okay. So if any... I don't know, how do people get in touch with you, or what's the best way to handle it?
Yeah, if they want to mail it, they can just mail it, attention to the commission office at the county address.
Okay, all right. Sounds good. Any other commissioner reports? All right, if not, I got to hit the road, so I don't know if there's a need for executive session or not. No? Okay, if there's no need, then I would consider a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
We call the roll, please.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes. All right, we're adjourned. Have a great week, everybody.